My name is Diane Thompson and I'm the chairman of the board of the Huntington Beach Chamber of Commerce. Really want to welcome all of you in attendance. This is terrific to see such local participation and interest in learning about the candidates that will be representing us for the next four years. I will be introducing our candidates. I will be explaining the format for our event and the rules and really why we're holding the forum. One of the aspects of the Chamber of Commerce is advocacy and education, and this is where they meet. Advocacy is talking to you about your business and ways to help you. This is an opportunity for you to learn the candidates so you can make the best choice for you. So, we have our candidates this afternoon who are seated in alphabetical order by their first name, so not to confuse everybody. We have Alexander Polsky. We have Billy O'Connell. We have Brendan Kenny. We have Eric Peterson. Hector Valdez. Joe Shaw. Lynn Semeta. Mark Bixby. And Mike Posey. So, let's give them all a hand here. Thank you. All right. Today, we will have some yes and no questions. They will not be answering them verbally, just raising their paddles, yes or no. It'll be easy for everyone to see the response. We will have an opening statement. They will each have two minutes to read their opening statement. They will have a countdown screen that they can see. You guys might not see it, but they'll know when their time is running short. So, they're going to self-monitor, I know it. They're all great. They've done this a time or two already. Then, we will begin with our open-ended questions. They will have one minute to respond. Now, some of these times might seem a little short and not fair, but we've got nine candidates. We want to give everybody a chance, but I'm confident there will be an opportunity to speak to the candidates after this event if you need some follow-up. And then, we will have closing. They will have two minutes for the closing statements. This is not a debate. The moderator, whom I will introduce in a moment, or no, someone will introduce in a moment, the moderator will be the only one asking questions. We will not be fielding any questions from the audience. The answers are to be directed to the moderator or the audience. The candidates are asked not to respond until the moderator gives them the go-ahead. You'll have your time shown up here, gentlemen and lady, so you can't miss how much time you have left. And just be respectful of that clock, and in the back, Joy will also be telling you when you have 30 seconds left and when you're done. So, with that, my short term up here is almost done. I would like to introduce Jeff Snow of Rainbow Environmental Services. Thank you.
Good afternoon and good luck to all of our candidates. Thank you for your willingness to serve and lead this magnificent community of Surf City. It is a great honor to introduce our moderator for the afternoon, Ed Arnold. Ed is a true local gem to our communities. Many of you know him from television where he served for over 30 years on KTLA and KABC-TV in Los Angeles, and subsequent to that, on the local PBS station. Ed's awards are far too numerous to mention, but some highlights. In 2007, he was honored with the Radio and Television News Association of Southern California Lifetime Achievement Award. And Ed and his wife Dixie Arnold, in 2003, were honored with the Americana Award, the Man and Woman of the Year in Orange County. That is a powerful marriage. Currently, Ed is serving as the honorary chairman of the World Games Special Olympics Host Town Committees for both Fountain Valley and Huntington Beach. It is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that the United States of America has to welcome the world to Los Angeles in July and August of 2015, and Huntington Beach and Fountain Valley are both being designated as host towns to welcome the world and host athletes and coaches from foreign nations for three days prior to the games starting. Please come out tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. at the pier to help celebrate the public announcement of World Games. And again, thank you to Ed for his service to the community, all of his charitable endeavors. And with that, please welcome Ed Arnold.
Jeff, thank you very much. And he almost threw in the fact that I'm the honorary chair because I'm lucky enough to be one of the founders of Special Olympics in the Western United States back in 1968. So, that's been fun, watching the growth of that program. We're here for a very special reason, as has been explained, and you know what it happens to be, because if you're not old enough to vote, you certainly can get involved in campaigns, and that's something that I always try to emphasize to young people. You don't have to sit on the sidelines. Your parents may not be that involved, but if you choose to do so, find a candidate that you like, no matter what the office and work. Do some work, learn about it, and it's amazing what can happen and what you can learn. These candidates are outstanding individuals. All have made a mark for themselves in this community. All of them care about the community. They certainly would not be running. All right. The first time we're going to start is the yes and no questions. Pick up your little boards here, your little paddles, and take a look, and be sure when you hold up your answer, it's pointing that direction, please. It's nice that you want to look at it from this side, but one says yes, one says no. And if you'd hold those up, and again, hold them up until I ask you to lower them, please. Do you support rent control in Huntington Beach? Would you support an increase in property taxes or sales taxes to pay for the needed Now, currently, the Bolshichka Wetlands are under the administration and maintenance of the county of Orange. Would you support the annexation of those wetlands by the city of Huntington Beach with all the associated benefits and liabilities? Do you support the desalination project by Poseidon in Huntington Beach? An additional free general-purpose lane for the 405 freeway has been approved by the OCTA, and it will be built with Measure M2 money. Would you support an additional toll lane built by Caltrans that offered continuous access, maintain 2-plus occupancy, toll-free, and the management and fees remained under Orange County control? Then, I have, this is going to be a follow-up question for you. Do you favor a toll lane added to the 405 freeway in Orange County, particularly in the Huntington Beach, Fountain Valley, Westminster areas? That's toll lane. It is the two minutes. Lynn, would you start it, please?
So, again, Lynn Semeta for Huntington Beach City Council, and I thank everyone for coming out today. Thank the chamber for hosting us. I graduated from Huntington Beach High School and went to UCLA for my bachelor's, and then on to University of San Diego for my law degree, and I'm a business and real estate transactional attorney. I believe that, I'm a strong believer in fiscal conservatism and limited government, and because of that, I believe that we as private citizens need to step up and serve our communities and work on some of the social issues that we have, and that's something I have always done. I've done pro-bono services for homeless veterans and for battered women and homeless women, for instance. And when we moved back here from San Diego in '96, my daughter was diagnosed with autism. So, I once again found a need to get involved in my community. I was asked by other parents, because I'm an attorney, to sue the school districts, but instead, being someone who believes that we need to work together for common goals, I worked with the school districts on trying to channel funds away from litigation defense and into helping better the services for the children. I've also served on the investment advisory committee, and I'm currently a planning commissioner for the city. Some of the issues that I'm very concerned about in the city are, I want us to be more of a business-friendly environment. I want us to, I want businesses to want to come here. We need to work better to reach out to them and recruit them and reduce fees and regulations and so forth. I'm also quite concerned about the pace of large-scale apartment buildings that are going up around our city. I'm worried about the effect, the impact that they'll have on our infrastructure that is already deteriorating, so that's something I'm also concerned about. I'd like to see more transparency in government. I'm very interested in what Costa Mesa is doing right now with the coin, the civic openness for negotiations. I think we should be looking at something like that as well. And, well, it looks like my time is up, so again, Lynn Semeta for City Council, and I hope for your vote in November. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Mark Bixby, and it's really nice to be air-conditioned this afternoon because I don't have it at home. I've been a resident of the city since 1999. My wife grew up here in the '70s. Back in 2001, I was living a quiet life as a software engineer when a flyer from the Bolshichka Land Trust landed on my doorstep. This flyer invited me to attend a community meeting to discuss the fate of the 50-acre Shea Parkside property near my house. At the time, I didn't know anything about this kind of stuff. I was fairly new to Huntington Beach, but I thought, what the heck? What's the worst that could happen if I attended this one community meeting? And had I known how that simple act was going to change my life, I probably should have burned the flyer, but I attended the meeting, and I'm here running for City Council, and so how the heck did that happen? When you're involved with Bolshichka, you attend a lot of public hearings. During that process, I quickly became disillusioned by the poor quality of the information brought forward and major projects like that. I was also disillusioned by the fact that decision-makers were clearly not doing their homework and reading the material, and I was further disillusioned that people were making decisions not in accordance with the law. So, there came a point where I decided I had to be sitting up at the front of the room, and so I upped my involvement in city issues. I was appointed to the Charter Review Commission in 2009, and in 2011, I was appointed to the Planning Commission by Connie Bordman. Long story short, my campaign is all about responsible, broad-based economic growth balanced with quality of life. Growth and quality of life are mutually reinforcing. Growth pays for things important to quality of life like parks, infrastructure, and public safety. Quality of life makes the city attractive to new businesses. The general plan update now in progress will be an important vehicle for balancing that growth and quality. I want to see the Gothard and industrial corridor be revitalized to keep those high-paying jobs within our city, and I want to see housing options for people of all ages and incomes. I think it's important for the people-
Time, please.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Posey. I'm a Main Street Downtown resident for 15 years. My wife and I, Jeannie, moved here after living in Yorba Linda. Living on Main Street gave us a front-row seat to the parade. That got my interest stimulated in serving the city, and I served on the parade board for a couple of years, and that led me to serving on the Planning Commission, right now as Joe Cartrow's Planning Commissioner. I'm running on a platform of three, really, three pillars in my platform: leadership, fiscal conservatism, and economic development. Right now, I'm serving as a Planning Commissioner. I've had the opportunity to be engaged in quite a few very interesting decisions. One, of course, was the rezoning of the Warner Nichols site from residential to more suited commercial-industrial. Voted on the Pesea Hotel, the Spring Hill Suites Hotel, and some other projects. Fiscal conservatism is another pillar of my campaign. One of the things that we need to really take a look at is the unfunded liability problem. We have 71% of our budget right now is spent on human resources, whether it's wages, salaries, benefits, and unfunded liabilities, and 15% of our budget is mandated by Charter to spend on infrastructure. That means 86% of our budget is already accounted for, leaving 14% for extra police, extra fire, capital expenditures, other improvements. We need to rein in unfunded liabilities. There's been some progress, significant progress, made with the City Council. I think we can do better. We can do better with smart economic development. Economic development needs to be pursued, and what I would do is, the City Councilman has established a business/CEO's roundtable discussion to make sure that we retain the businesses that we have and attract new businesses that we need. 11% of our population works in Huntington Beach, 89% commute out. I'd like to make that a little bit better than that. I'd like to earn your vote. Thank you.
Who am I? Who is Alexander? I'm a former district attorney, deputy district attorney here in Orange County. I've been endorsed by the sitting district attorney here in Orange County. I'm a member of the sheriff reserves, and I'm pro-law enforcement and pro-public safety with a balance necessary to make sure that funding is in line. I'm a businessperson. I created a private mediation practice after running a multi-office law firm. I'm now the owner, one of the owners, excuse me, of the group of, the largest private provider of ADR services in the world. We have offices throughout the United States. I'm hired as a peacemaker. I've received the top ratings in professional and ethics by all the independent rating agencies that rate lawyers nationwide. I have a licensed real estate broker, though I must tell you I don't practice. I do adjudicate a number of real estate disputes, and I'm a member of too many charitable organizations and boards to mention. What I am and what I'm not, I am independent. I'm running only because I think the city needs an enhanced direction. We're a great town, but I'm not going to make the type of promises needed to secure many of the special interest endorsements. As a private judge, I can't sit on lobbying type of organizations and don't. I'm only running as a member of the chamber to seek a different direction, to seek balanced growth consistent with our town, and frankly, I'm not an insider. I'm not looking for the old faces to push me through, and I love recycling. I think it's terrific, but I don't think recycling applies in government politics, and the movement back and forth from the specially selected members of the Planning Commission over to the City Council and back and forth, I don't think has been a good thing for the city. I think it's given us unbalanced growth. I'm not an insider. I don't need the job, and I'm not taking the salary that goes with it.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Billy O'Connell, and I'd like to share a little bit with you today about who I am. I was born in New York City and raised in Ireland. At 17 years of age, I came back to New York City where I worked in construction, and I paid my way through college. I graduated St. Francis College in Brooklyn, and in 1990, I came to California where I was a sheriff up in Los Angeles. In 1998, I saw a need in the community along with my daughter. We decided to start a program to take homeless women and children off the streets. We started from the tailgate of a pickup truck. This year, we will be celebrating taking over 3,000 homeless women and children off the streets. We also helped several hundred women find work and retain it. That's who I am. Some of the issues that are very concerning to me in our city is public safety. We need to have a quicker response time for our police officers. We need to reduce the rides and crime in our city. There's times in our city when there may be only one police officer to a population of 20,000 people. That is totally unacceptable to me. I also believe that we need to support our business community. The business community is very important to our city. They're the ones that drive the economic engine that fills our city treasures so that we can pay our services that are needed in our community. I also believe that we need to protect our beaches and our oceans. This is very important to our community. It's another part of the economic engine that drives our city. Also, infrastructure is very important to me. I've worked hard and saved to own a home in our community. We need to have good roads, good infrastructure, to bring people into our city so that we can do business and preserve our property values. That is very, very important to me. We don't get a second chance to make forced impressions. That's why I am running. I also believe we need to build our senior center and give a good quality of life to our seniors who have helped build this city.
Time, please.
Hello, I'm Brendan Kenny. I moved to this town a couple of years ago, about seven now. This town opened me with open arms. I couldn't believe how nice and how people brought me in, and from that, I came into the community and was helping a lot with a lot of people, and just trying to do my best to make this town my home, and I want this town to be my home. It is my home. I've been involved in a lot of stuff behind the scenes as far as helping people with veterans, the homeless. I was one of the people that right away during that US Open riot, screenshotted everybody that was doing it that moment, saved them all, posted them, and that's what a lot of the police officers used to catch these kids, because I wanted to send a message that you can't come into our town, mess with it, destroy local businesses that earned their right to be there, and just because you could just run around this town, break stuff, letting people know that everybody has cameras, and you will be caught. As far as me running for City Council, it's because I need, there's a generation gap, and I want to bring that gap together, and I want the residents of this town to know what's going on at City Council at all times. No easy way of getting out of just banning a problem when it comes to town. Residents need to know what's happening and why you want to ban it right away when there's probably issues that we could fix it without banning it and letting the residents vote. And I really believe that the residents need to vote on most of these main issues that some City Council members are not letting the residents vote, and that's pretty much why I'm running for City Council.
Hello, my name's Eric Peterson. I'm running for City Council. I grew up in this city. I have a business in this city. My wife works for the high school district. My two sons go to the high school here at Marina, one freshman, one senior. I got involved in local politics because I had concerns about our financial shape here in Huntington Beach after a discussion I had with one of our employees. So, I got on the finance board and started digging into it. I eventually got assigned to the finance board, and we did a lot of good reports and found out some good information, and we presented this information to the council and basically had a deaf ear. So, that prompted me to run. And one of the biggest problems in our city is our unfunded liability and our pension costs. It was brought up that it was 71. It's actually 72% of our budget. And you'll hear people saying, well, we're going to pay an extra million here, or we paid $5 million here for the last few years. Well, that $5 million was to pay off an early retirement, and it didn't do really, we had to, CalPERS, that was their thing to get us to have our early retirement. The million extra a year is basically trying to avoid a huge payment. So, as long as we have these problems that we're not addressing, which is the employee costs, we are going to get into other things that are regulating business, more cost for business, different types of developments that we may not like, but they bring in a lot of money. So, like a business, when you have to look at your finances and see what the best thing is to do with your money, the city's doing the same thing, and they're trying to get as much money as they can in to cover these costs, but they're not fixing the costs themselves. So, it's really a staple of my campaign to really go after the finance of the city so we have a city we can enjoy in the future, because I want to retire.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Hector Valdez, and I am running for City Council, and I know what some of you guys are thinking. I think I saw that guy, I'm Duck Dynasty. Rest assured that it wasn't me. Icebreaker. Okay, so, my name is Hector Valdez. Some may know me as just Heck. I'm a tattoo artist. I'm a painter. I'm an avid sock collector. I'm a wannabe photographer, and I cure at art shows in the community to help raise money for those in need. I grew up in Chino, California. My father's a Vietnam vet and retired Los Angeles County Sheriff. My mother was a homemaker. I moved to Huntington Beach almost 20 years ago. I'm married to a beautiful woman, and I am the father of two amazing boys. From a very young age, my brothers and I were taught several important values to carry us through life: be respectful, be a man of your word, always lend a hand to those in need, work hard, never stand on the sidelines, and never be afraid to question authority. With these values, I am running for City Council. I am not running because I desire to be a politician. I seek no further political career. I only want to serve my community and be a part of the solution, not part of the problem. I am entering this election with a fresh approach. We need to break the cycle, this, excuse me, we need to break the same old cycle and bring new visions to the City Council dais, new and creative solutions to some of the problems our city is dealing with. We need to listen to and include our citizens on what's best for the city Huntington Beach. We need less exclusion and less poor decision-making on our residents' behalf. I share many of the residents' concerns, such as density in regards to infrastructure, traffic and safety, and the strain on our services. Citizen involvement when making decisions that will affect our daily lives.
Time, please. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joe Shaw. I'm your mayor pro temp. Four years ago, I ran on a platform of listening to residents and improving our quality of life. Since then, I've addressed the plight of seniors in our mobile home parks, addressed the problems in our downtown neighborhoods caused by the oversaturation of alcohol-serving establishments. I've stood up for cleaner beaches and oceans, protecting our ocean, improving parks, and protecting open space of Bolshichka. We've recovered from the recession and buoyed by our award-winning 10-point business plan. We've seen retail spaces fill up and great new restaurants open. Our recovery has enabled us to add seven police officers and two community service officers, restore funding for parks and youth programs. We've paid off one retirement liability, and we have a plan to pay off our PERS safety liability early, paying an extra $1 million a year that will save taxpayers $54 million. That plan has earned us a triple-A rating from Fitch Rating Service. I've been happy to be of service for the past four years, and I humbly ask for your vote so we can continue the city on a sensible, balanced path for prosperity and quality of life.
Now, what we did is we had a drawing earlier to see what order they would go in with the open and closing statements, and also now when we start the questions, these opening questions, and Eric Peterson will answer first, and then it will go to his left. What are the three biggest challenges that you see in Huntington Beach?
Three biggest challenges would be maintaining our infrastructure, keeping our viable police force and fire service with our current pension structure and pay structure, and the third would probably be responsible development down Beach Boulevard. I don't want to lose the character of Huntington Beach in the development. So, those three issues would probably be the biggest ones right now.
Can you produce a question, please? Yes. What are the three biggest challenges that you see in Huntington Beach? The three biggest challenges.
I feel three of the big challenges would be paying down the unfunded liabilities, for one. Responsible growth within our community. A common sense approach to the way our city will grow. I apologize, I kind of stuck on it. It's no problem. Can I leave it at two at this point?
Two if you'd like, absolutely.
Yeah, I'm sorry for not having the third.
Well, I believe unfunded liabilities that we face in the future are a great detriment to our city. In the 2020s, right now, we pay about under $20 million a year to our PERS liabilities, but in the 2020s, we'll pay close to $40 million payments to PERS liabilities. That's why our, the plan that we have to pay off our unfunded liabilities early, for every $1 million we pay extra to our PERS liability now, we will save $5 million for the taxpayers. So, we're, this City Council has been committed to paying that, doing that, paying extra $1 million each year to pay off our PERS safety liability in 26 years instead of 30 and to save taxpayers $54 million. The second one is, we need to come up with a plan to replace our public safety, particularly our police, to full employment. We are still at pre-recession levels. We've hired seven more police officers, but we definitely need to hire more.
Time, please.
So, I agree with what others have stated, that I think our primary concern would be the financial, being able to meet our financial obligations on a going-forward basis. The unfunded pension liabilities are a true concern, and that leads into my second point, which is our ability to keep up with our infrastructure, repair it, improve it. It's very deteriorating at the moment, as well as pay for the public safety that we need, especially downtown, being able to have enough police presence to deal with the issues that we have down there. So, my third point would be that, again, balanced real estate development throughout our city, that we are making sure that we're not building out too quickly, that we can meet the infrastructure as we go along, and that if we're going to be building more residential, we need to have transportation in place. So, I instead would like to see us doing more commercial development. Thank you.
Mark?
Well, as others have said, the near-term fiscal challenges from PERS are certainly the 800-pound gorilla in the bedroom. I support the current council's long-term financial plan to gain, to get ahead of that debt. I'm the son of parents who went through tough times in the Great Depression. I inherited that level of fiscal conservatism. I paid off my own mortgages decades early, and I will work to do the same with the city's debt. The second biggest challenge is the general plan update. That's actually the most important long-range planning item going on in the city today. It will determine where we're going to go as a community for the next 25 years, and I think it's important to achieve the right balance between responsible growth and quality of life, because it was for the quality of life that we all moved here to Huntington. And the third item is making sure that- And the third item is making sure that we scale city services efficiently and handle the infrastructure demands to meet the increased growth over time. Thanks.
Unfunded liabilities is the number-one concern, whether it's seventy-one or seventy-two percent of our budget, payroll expenses, wages, salaries, and PERS expenses are way too much, it's, and not to coin a phrase, but it's unsustainable. The minimum objective that we ought to be striving for is at least paying out as much as we're taking in in pension liabilities. That would be my goal, and that can be done by smart negotiation and smart economic development. Commercial is the way to go, we need to have more people working in the city, less strain on public safety. And public safety needs to be addressed, too. We're certainly short, about twenty or so police officers that we had pre-recession times, I did spend a long evening downtown on Main Street, I live on Main Street, so I know what goes on there. There could be some more police officers, but we also need to rein in the existing liabilities before we start adding.
Safety, quality, and money. Safety, quality, and money. We need cops, we need more cops. We need a fully-funded police department, fully staffed with the latest technology. Our cops, our public safety personnel should be amongst the highest paid in the state, and certainly competitive with other beach cities, and we're not gonna get them, and we're not gonna keep them. But we have to balance those needs against money. Quality of life, safety, quality, money, quality of life. It's balanced business, it's balanced development, it's not a thousand units with five hundred parking places, that's not balanced. It's building, development, commercial, but with roadway mitigation, paid for by those builders, so that we don't clog up our streets while we are handling it. It's money, it's building a senior center, but not taking twenty-two million dollars from the budget, but rather getting endowments from private business. It is paying off that debt, but paying it off prudently.
Time.
Balancing the checkbook.
It's very simple for me, our quality of life, public safety is very important, just like Alex mentioned here. Our business community, the ones that drive the economic engine, we have to make it easier for our businesses to do business in our community, it's very simple. We have to reduce the bureaucracy and the red tape of doing business in our community. Our infrastructure is very important, I mean, moving forward, you know, we have to have good roads, good infrastructure, and I believe that we have to be proactive instead of being reactive. As the vice, as the former vice chair of the Public Works Commission, I got the opportunity to study many reports and to see the challenges that we will face in the future with our public infrastructure. So I firmly believe that we have to be proactive instead of reactive, and we will save a great deal of money by being preventive with some of the measures that we take moving forward. I also believe that we need to build our senior center, and our seniors are the ones that helped build this city, and a lot of years of their life, I would like them to have some space to live.
Definitely unfunded liabilities, safety of the streets, I mean, there's been a lot of car accidents and bikes and stuff, it's a little dangerous for the people that are riding their bikes everywhere. Third is, I would really like to see responsible tech companies come into this town, like companies that would be the size of Google or up there, to where in our community, we could have jobs that are a hundred thousand a year, so people can just go to work instead of getting on the highways, instead of going to Irvine, instead of going to LA, they can work in the community and just enjoy this community the way it's supposed to be, it's a beach community, and you should better stay here and work here, and not have to go to Irvine and LA to do all that. And, yeah.
Now, moving to the next question, and Hector, you'll be the one that'll be starting this, again, based on the draw they had earlier. Do you think the Beach-Eddinger corridor specific plan has been successful? Why or why not?
I think more thought could have been put into the process. I feel that it is growing at a tremendous rate. I feel it's putting a tremendous strain on our infrastructure, our services, traffic, and things of that nature, so, yeah, I think it's just, it's moving way too fast, the amount of people that are coming in to rent those apartments and whatnot, you know, once again, back to the services, police, fire, and things of that nature.
That's really more than a one-minute question, because it's a very complicated plan, it was thought out over several years, and it was passed in two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight. It was supposed to be a twenty-year plan, but the economic recession jump-started the building of apartments. So apartments were approved between two thousand and eight and two thousand and twelve, these apartments that you see springing up were approved then. I voted against several of them. I believe that some of the concepts behind the Beach-Eddinger specific plan were good to build high-density along the corridors and where there was existing retail, to encourage people to walk to the services. But however, I understand the concern of residents about the traffic and the traffic impacts that it could have. I know that there are traffic mitigation that is built into the plan, but I believe that we need to take a second look at it and try to find a way to make sure that the traffic is being mitigated properly, because it is a big concern of our residents.
Judging by the feelings of the residents that I speak to around the city, I would say it, in its current form, has not been successful. People are not happy with the large-scale developments at the number that we're seeing happening around the city, and they are concerned about the infrastructure and so forth, and as city representatives, we need, well, if I become one, which I hope I will, we need to listen to what the residents want. So I think that, no, judging by that and other concerns that I have, it has not been a success. We did need to add to our housing stock, and we've done that, but at this point, I think we need to look at, as I've said before, bringing in commercial developments instead that bring jobs to the city and help with our tax base.
I believe the Beach-Eddinger specific plan has been a success so far in terms of spring reinvestment in what had previously been tired commercial corridors of Eddinger and Beach. Eddinger has been completely transformed, I support that new look. I think we need to be careful on the continued execution to make sure that we do deliver on the promised infrastructure improvements. The city is banking money to do transportation improvements, and we do need to make sure that those actually go. That requires some cooperation with Caltrans, Caltrans isn't necessarily the easiest to do business with, so we may have to look at other things like considering taking over jurisdiction of Beach Boulevard, so we can be more in control of our own transportation destiny.
I think the Beach-Eddinger corridor specific plan is a successful work-in process that needs to maybe to have another look taken at, looked at it, taken. There were originally approval for about sixty-four hundred apartment units, I think there are on the books now twenty-four hundred or twenty-five hundred that are done, and maybe another thousand or so ready to go. I echo the sentiments of Mayor Pro Tem Joe Shaw, that there is a suddenness to it. When the recession kicked in in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, banks weren't lending any money, construction came to a screeching halt. Now that money has loosened up, there's been a suddenness of these apartments popping up, and I think that's shaking people up a little bit. We do need some density, density brings in another generation of people, Huntington Beach is aging. We need a generation of, a new generation of people that'll start businesses, work in the city, and eventually buy a home here. Rents are twenty-five hundred bucks and up, so these aren't low-income apartments, they're
Time, thank you very much.
expensive.
Okay, Alex, you have the mic.
The answer is no, but it could have been great, and it still might be great. It's a lovely place to go at the right time of day. It's terrible the rest of the time, and it shouldn't be. And the reason respectfully that the incumbents and the city planning candidates should not come to the city council is because of this plan, it's because of the overbuilding, it's because of the lack of thoughtfulness in making it work, that was their job. So, no, I don't think it's working. Yes, I think it can work. It needed highway mitigation, and when I heard the number of apartments still set to be built, I love apartments, they're great for the city, honestly, so is business, but you have to balance that growth, how do you get there, how do you get out, and will it be safe? And that, I'm afraid, does not appear to have been done.
Thank you.
I think the Beach Corridor plan was a good idea, but it definitely has some issues and problems that need to be addressed. And I do understand the economic aspect of it, and when there was a time when there was very, very little funding available to build these apartments, but moving forward, I think we need to take a common sense approach, reevaluate, move forward, we need affordable housing in this community, we need workforce housing, so moving forward, I strongly suggest that we analyze this, we review the Beach Corridor plan, so we don't run into the issues of the traffic congestion, we don't run into the parking issues that we have up there right now where residents, when people come to visit them, their cars are being towed. But we do need some good quality developments in our community. So moving forward, I think there's room for that to happen, but we do have, like I said, we have to address the traffic congestion, that is an issue, and it needs to be dealt with. Thank you.
Yes, I like the development, but it does need to be revamped, we do need to figure out better ways for the traffic and the parking, like everybody's saying, and it could be a great thing, it's got rushed, I guess, and we need to figure out before it gets worse on how to fix these problems and get them done the right way and costly effective way. It's a great opportunity for those businesses there, and for our city right there off the highway, and for people to live, but we just, I guess, we just rushed a little bit, so we need to figure out and put our heads together and make all those problems right.
Thank you.
I've always felt that Huntington Beach has a nice mix of inventory, I think we have a nice balance of apartments, of condominiums, of single-family homes, of mansions, beachfront property. I think we have, are tipping that balance to apartments on our corridor. I don't like the fact that we're being told by state and county offices what we need to build in our city, I think it should be more of a local issue, because it is our city and we live here. I think there's been a couple developments that have helped and spurs up, but I think six stories over a strip mall is horrible for this city, and I don't think we should have anything like that. We need more of a mixed use of commercial, we need more, the retail stores, commercial, and residential, but not just residential over a strip mall.
Okay, we'll move now to our next question, and Joe Shaw, we'll start with you on this. What, if any, incentives would you consider to attract businesses with higher-paying jobs?
The city of Huntington Beach has, for the last four years, developed a ten-point business plan. The ten-point business plan won the Orange County Business Council's Red Tape to Red Carpet Award. We're developing a new economic plan as we speak, we've seen the preliminary report on that, it's got lots of good things in it. Three things I'd like to see were, would be high-speed broadband development along the Gothard Industrial Corridor. I think we need to improve the coordination between our departments during the entitlement process, speed up the process, save business owners' time and money. I think we can also develop, well, we are developing a loan fund to replace the redevelopment funds that went away. This revolving loan fund would support new businesses and startups at a very low interest rate, and that's of an important measure, I think, we can take to stimulate business in the next four years.
Thank you.
Well, I think one thing would be if we were to build more commercial office space and bring in jobs that are higher-paying, that that could be helpful, as opposed to just retail on the bottom floor, as Eric mentioned. So that could be helpful. I also think we could look more at tax-sharing agreements that have been done in the past to incentivize business to come here and to stay here if they're thinking about leaving. So those are also areas, but we need to be careful if we do that, that it is applied fairly and not just to certain businesses. So I think those are a couple things that we could do. I also would like to see more emphasis on the business development department, I think it's great that we have the plan that we do in place, but that I would like to see even more emphasis on beefing up that department to reach out more and recruit more business. So, thank you.
Serving on Planning Commission, you certainly get to see the dark underbelly of the bureaucracy, clearly, there's still too much bureaucracy, a lot of things come before Planning Commission that, you know, you go, why wasn't this handled at lower levels? I don't like things like variances and special permit deviations, I think that's a sign that we need to have a conversation with the business community to see what code changes better fit our needs as a community. So I would love to enter into discussions with there on how to make things better. The bureaucracy certainly has room for optimization. Still, in the year 2014, you have planning staff handwriting page numbers on every Planning Commission staff report. Let's use technology, folks, and I fully support the prior suggestions to look at extending broadband infrastructure down the Gothard Corridor. I am a FiOS customer, and you'll have to pry it out of my cold-dead fingers, it's the greatest thing ever for higher-technology companies, and we need more broadband here to attract those companies.
Time, thank you.
I would start with making sure that the businesses that we have want to stay here, and that's why I would establish the Business Owners, Business Executives Roundtable to reach out to retain the businesses that we have. When I had my business in the city of Huntington Beach, I was on Gothard Street, there really wasn't much red tape to establishing it, getting permits, occupancy permits. The only contact I had with the city, though, was when I had my occupancy permit inspection, and it was not a very pleasant experience, but that was the only contact I had with the city, and I think that was a shame. I think that city council ought to know who the business owners are, reach out to the businesses, and be in touch with those people so that they stay and expand and grow their businesses, and when they grow, they don't leave, they stay. Tax sharing is a great idea, especially for the auto dealers, auto dealers generate a tremendous amount of sales tax revenue, I know we have room for one or two more dealers, that would be one thing I'd be looking at to attract an automobile dealership. Thank you.
Easy, fun, and workable for our small businesses to function and exist here. Not overloading the city with big businesses, which I love, but big boxes become empty spaces in changed economic circumstances, as do car dealerships. Permitting has gotta be streamlined. There are businesses, small businesses, that I talk to who say they'd love to come to Huntington Beach, but it's too tough to get here, and then it's too tough to stay here. You have the Albertson Center where the small businesses in there, some of whom have my signs, are saying, we're getting choked by parking regulations, and right down the street, special interests, inside special interests are giving the Walmart Center whatever it wants, the little Walmart Center. If we want to give money to small businesses that want to have capital risk here, I don't think it should be the city's capital that is placed at risk. So I disagree with that suggestion, but I do agree strongly that we have to make it easier for them to get here, come here, build out their space, and then stay.
Thank you.
It's very simple for me, I feel that we need to create more public-private partnerships, protect and serve the existing businesses in our community. We should be reaching out to the likes of the Boeing companies, what can we do to attract more employees into our community? The former Sharps Center where Harvard Distribution is coming into town, we should be able to keep these existing businesses. I would create a forum of business, folks, how we can attract good, good companies into our city, good-paying jobs. Another thing I would have to say is I'd have to reduce the red tape. I was at a business this morning, basically, where they wanted to put up a canopy which was larger than ten by ten, they reached out to the fire department, they didn't know what to do, they went over to the planning department, they didn't know what to do, so nobody knew what was going on. Business in Sunset Beach has a table outside, they wanted to put an umbrella on top of the table, they were supposed to get a permit to do this. This madness has to stop, we have to streamline the process to make it quicker and easier for business to do business in our community.
For already-existing local businesses, we need to really support them more and make Huntington a city where businesses grow and become huge, we're being known for this city to be launching companies, and then more companies will come into Huntington Beach. If we were the ones that were known, there's so many great people in this town making their own product, starting their own restaurants, if we helped them out, like what you were saying with the red tape, we let them, let's launch companies, let's be where, like, big chain corporations started, and they, all of a sudden, they came from Huntington, like, we have a smart tech company here, and then all of a sudden, they blow a bigger than Google, and they came from Huntington, and it's Huntington people working there. Let's really support our local businesses, and then, on the other side, with the bigger tech companies that we could get coming in here, let's figure out some tax breaks or something we could do. I'm new at this, I don't know what kind of tax breaks you could give out, but let's figure out how to get them in here, but also really focus.
Well, I think focusing on the businesses we have is a great idea. I have a business in Huntington, and the only people I see is fire coming in to check my space. So that is, that is one way to do it. Another way is to cut down on the cost of doing business here. Too often, the city looks at the business as where they're getting their money and not actually the product they're selling, the tax base. And we get hit with, you know, inspection fees, and you want to do anything, and you go through every department, and there's a price tag on every department you go through. And we need to, those businesses have to know those costs going into a project, because we've had stuff come through Planning Commission, they're all ready to go, they're approved, and now there's all these extra costs that they weren't aware of. So we need to make businesses aware of the cost to do business in our city, make that cost lower, make it easier for them, protect the residents and the businesses of the city at the same protect the residents and the businesses of the city at the same time.
I definitely feel like people wanting to open a small business, it should be a little more streamlined, and I agree with the red tape. When we opened our shop maybe seven years ago, I felt like we kind of got put through the wringer with the permitting and dealing with the city. You know, some sort of incentive program to attract these businesses, you know? By the time everything was said and done, it took us almost about six months to eight months for us to finally open our shop. So I felt the city could have been a little more business friendly and helping us along the way with the streamlining and maybe, you know, cutting some of that red tape.
Thank you very much. Our next question, Lynn, you lucked out on this one, too. You get to start it. There have been several controversial issues such as plastic bags, fireworks, and pet sales before the City Council, all of which have resulted in some form of a ban. Would you consider an alternative to a ban, and what might that be?
I would not consider an alternative to a ban. I would just like to not see the bans. You know, I'm a strong believer in the Constitution, and I think the power should be in the people, and we should not be limiting individual liabilities unless there's a truly compelling reason to do so. And I think things like whether you want to carry a plastic grocery bag or have safe and sane fireworks do not have that compelling reason to limit what we're doing as citizens. So for that reason, I would not come up with an alternative. I would instead try to reduce restrictions and bans within our city. So, thank you.
Yes, the job of decision makers is to craft coherent public policy that moves us forward as a city into the future. Things like bag bans, while I understand some people feel that infringes on the personal freedom, we as a city derive the bulk of our economic activity through tourism. Having a clean ocean and clean beaches is critical to our tourism. So ultimately, it's a business-friendly move on our part to reduce the junk in our environment. So I support that particular one. Fireworks is going to be up to the people. The people get to decide. Personally, I think if we're in a situation where dialing 911 on the 4th of July gets you a busy signal, we have a problem. So I don't personally support fireworks coming back, but the people get to choose. Thanks.
This is real easy for me. The plastic bag ban is what's really stimulated me to run for City Council in the first place. Banning plastic bags, banning fireworks, all of the other bans, Styrofoam, is not the purview of the City Council. The City Council is to manage the budget, manage the city, and managing the city by bans is not managing the city. That's not leadership. I would have, if you wanted to say we want to ban plastic bags because it's environmentally friendly, let's look at the science. The science proves that it's not environmentally friendly. Carbon footprint is four times greater with a paper bag, and we have the city telling the grocery stores to charge you 10 cents for a paper bag. When do the government get in charge of setting prices, besides Obamacare? I would, you know, if we wanted to do, you know, be do-gooders, let's make a ballot initiative. And we didn't do a ballot initiative because ballot initiatives cost money. It's easier and more expeditious for the City Council to create a ban. That's not what we're all about. I'd support a ballot initiative for anything like this in the future. And I wouldn't hope that the bans wouldn't come to us in the first place.
Time, please, thank you.
Well, before I was a lawyer, trial lawyer and mediator now, I was a special ed teacher. And, you know, we got the things that we needed to get from our children through rewards, not through successive punishments. Rewards, not deprivation. So I want you to know that I am a true supporter of one ban. I think we need to ban the bans.
I also believe in the Constitution, and I also believe that we should ban the bans. Policymakers have no business telling me what I can shop with and what I cannot shop with. I'm a responsible human being. I know what to do with a plastic bag. I also believe that we should be allowed to have fireworks in our city. All the kids and all the social groups that benefit from the sales of fireworks in our community is huge. So I feel that the policymakers, once again, have no business regulating and telling us what to do with fireworks. And when it comes to the plastic bags, we need to look at upriver, on the San Ana River, all the cities upriver where all their plastic bags get dumped in and get washed out into the ocean. That's another thing that we need to look at. Now, the ban on the fire pits, I think that is so wrong. It's nanny government telling us what to do, what we can't do, and they have no place. Government has no place in my kitchen, and it has no place in our bedrooms. Simple as that. Thank you.
Yes, we need to stop banning everything. And a lot of these bans, the citizens weren't even able to say anything about it. They went behind doors and then took your right to vote away from you. And that's what really fired me up, and it fired a lot of people up. And I don't think we should lose our right to vote. And we need to stop banning. We should have safe, same fireworks. They're not, I mean, there's no injuries from the two years. And people still bring illegal fireworks no matter what. That's like saying, hey, you can't sell aspirin at CVS because there's a coke dealer around the corner, and you're bringing drugs into this town. And the fire pits, that's crazy. This is a beach town. Families come, they spend time, it's one of the great family activities in this town, and they're just going to take it away? No, we need to stop the banning and figure out solutions.
Well, speaking of the Constitution, happy Constitution Day to everyone. It is Constitution Day, and in that Constitution, it was said limited government. And I don't believe bans are necessary or should be by a municipality in any instance. I think educating people is fine, and we do that through our schools and maybe community outreach programs, but to just ban things on agenda basis or, you know, your beliefs, what happens when we get some other belief and they ban something those people don't like? It's just a back and forth. Our last council tried to, you know, they came up with a thing where they were going to charge anyone when it gets in an accident in Huntington Beach, and people freaked out. Well, that council stepped back, said, hey, we made a mistake, and they fixed it. They took it away. This council hasn't, and I think we just need to get rid of these bans.
I have a tremendous problem with people telling me what to do, especially when it comes to my personal life, from banning plastic bags, which, you know, people use them responsibly. Fireworks, the amount of money that it brings to our local organizations for the children and whatnot. So for people to sit up there and tell us how to live our lives because they don't think we're responsible or smart enough to figure things out, I just have a real problem with them. So we need to stop bagging, banning things such as the bags and the fireworks. How about a little more education as far as, you know, recycle, you know? How to properly, you know, set off your snakes and sparklers in your front lawn? How about that, instead of just taking them away and taking away the front yard parties that I can enjoy with my family and friends, you know? Who's going to teach them how to write their name in the sky with a sparkler? I can't do that anymore. Thank you.
Well, I think what we forget about in this debate about the bans is that both our plastic bag ban and our puppy mill ban were brought forward by citizens groups. We listen to their legitimate concerns, and I think there are very compelling reasons to ban plastic bags and puppy mills. A city that depends on the ocean for surfing, for recreational uses, for when tourism brings in 4,500 jobs to our city, we spend a million dollars a day. Tourists spend a million dollars a day here. We have a very strong reason to make sure that our oceans and beaches are as pristine and clean as possible. And I will not apologize for taking measures that will do that because it is important to our economic vitality and is important to our future of our children.
Well, final question, Mark Pigsby, we will start with you. What does affordable housing mean to you?
Affordable housing means to me that essentially, as I said earlier, the people who work in this city can find housing that they can afford. I think that's one of the unsung benefits of the Beach Edge Corridor specific plan. There is a requirement in there for 10% of all units to be affordable, inclusionary affordable housing. And that, I think, is a huge thing. A lot of those new apartments going in are 2,000 bucks, plus or minus, for a one-bedroom at market rate. So it's been hugely important to have that affordable housing concept. And I support that continued requirement as we go forward in that plan and possibly through the general plan update process.
Well, there's affordable and there's affordability. And with the Beach Edge Corridor specific plan and some of these apartments that are $2,000, $2,700, $3,000 a month, we have a measure of affordability. The market decides what's affordable. Unfortunately, we are mandated by the state to provide affordable housing with those with limited incomes. The only problem is that those mandates aren't paid for anybody by the people that have to pay market rate rents. I don't know that we should be in the business of supplying affordable housing when we do have a measure of affordability with the housing options that we have. Eric mentioned that we have houses that are from beachfront million-dollar mansions to apartments and the whole spectrum. We have an affordability index that can be, that most people that want to live here can meet. And having affordable housing mandated and paid for, that's going to be paid for by you, the consumer, not anybody else.
Affordable housing to me means non-subsidized housing that individuals of limited means can afford to live in. That creates a building issue, construction issue, a use issue, and a pricing issue. Those people that I just spoke of can't pay $2,000 a month. They'll have trouble paying $800 a month. So the question becomes, how do we do it, and where do we do it? And who tells us how to do it? There are no clear answers to this, but there are requirements that this level of affordable housing be provided. And generally speaking, it's going to be provided either through apartment units, not through private housing sales. And I don't know that there's a way to avoid it for those people that want to avoid it. But that's what it means, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you.
Affordable housing means to me basically what the state of California, through the RENA, says the regional housing needs, which is a survey, which they stipulate that certain cities have a certain amount of affordable housing. Now, I also believe in workforce housing. But the way it works, and my understanding of it, is you can have a 30% affordability factor, you can have a 50% affordability factor, and an 80% affordability factor. And basically, that is something that is designated by the state, which is passed on to different cities. Now, I believe that the city of Huntington Beach has also met those needs, but there is definitely a need for affordable housing in our community.
As far as affordable housing, I mean, yes, we do need to have something to help out the lower-income families and stuff that are living in this town. And we just have to find a way to do it responsibly and in an area that is responsibly met for that. As far as more than that, I really need to do more research on that topic to give you guys a better response on that.
I've always thought affordable housing should be done through charity, not through government. It's impossible for government to be charitable because they have to take from someone, whether it be property or money, and find someone else to give it to. Whereas we, as individuals, Billy's organization, he brings in charitable money, and then he can afford, he can give out that affordable housing. So from a government mandate or from telling developers that they need to put 10% affordable housing in, I've never been for that. I just think it should all be done in the private sector and through private charities. And it used to, and the government slowly encroached, and now they're trying to be charitable. And I don't think they can be.
To me, affordable housing means making those homes available to those who make less than medium income. And I feel that there is a population of people in this community that, you know, I feel like we should keep them in our community instead of them working in the city of Huntington Beach and living in another city. You know, I feel that if there's some affordable housing, they will work in Huntington. They'll spend their money in Huntington. The tax revenue will stay in Huntington. And, you know, I feel that that's a good thing for our city.
Well, I think it's important that we continue with our current affordable housing programs and that we try to create more. I also look forward to working more closely with the Orange County Business Council and create better workforce housing in Huntington Beach. I also want to make it clear that I believe that the City Council step that we've taken to create a senior overlay for our mobile home parks, to keep our mobile home parks senior parks, the ones that are senior parks, helps with, is part of the affordable housing debate. And I also think that protecting seniors that live in mobile home parks should also be part of the affordable housing debate.
Well, I'm also concerned about the fact that the affordable housing doesn't have the funding behind it, and so it is placed upon, for instance, the developers to provide it. I have an issue with that as well. I think the other problem is that really it should be approached more on a regional level in terms of, we have neighboring cities that aren't providing the affordable housing, but we are. So we need to look at a way that it could be distributed more evenly throughout the cities. So those are some of the issues. I do feel that as far as people who truly cannot help themselves, the disabled, the mentally ill, that we do have a duty to provide for them certain things like housing benefits. So I would like to look at that as part of the issue as well. So, thank you.
Good, thank you very much. Now, we're going to go to our closing statements. And again, they drew to see who would have the honor of doing that. Billy O'Connell.
I want to thank each and every one of you for coming here today, taking the time out to learn more about your community and learn more about the candidates here today. I'm Billy O'Connell. I'm number six on your ballot, and I would appreciate your support. Some people think about doing things. Some people talk about doing things, and some people tell you about doing things. I have done it, I am doing it, and I will continue to do it for you. I am proudly endorsed by our sheriff, Sandra Hutchins. I'm also proudly endorsed by the Huntington Beach Chamber of Commerce. I'm endorsed by the Huntington Beach Police Officers Association, the Huntington Beach Firefighters Association, the Huntington Beach Marine Safety Association, small business owners, various groups throughout our community. I'm also endorsed by Travis Allen, Jim Silva, many former mayors, Shirley Detloff, Ron Shankman, Ralph Bauer, John Erskine, people that have served their community, people that believe in me, Shirley Detloff, great people that have served their community who believe in me. I want to be the person to serve you. I'm a person that builds bridges and not fences. I can sit down and talk with anybody, no matter what political backgrounds, affiliations, but at the end of the day, we have to have the common good for all in our city. We have to protect our seniors. We have to protect our youth, and we have to protect everybody in here. And we also have to preserve the quality of life moving forward. And I'm a strong believer that we should leave something better behind for the people that come behind us. It's not rocket science, it's simple common sense. And I believe I'm the person that can deliver to you that. Thank you so much. I would really appreciate your support. I'm number six on the ballot. I'd love to talk to you afterwards. My phone number is 714-943-0223.
I want to say thank you for you guys all coming out and letting me speak. I own a company in this town, and I work out of this town. I really want respectable companies to be here so I could have a better paying job, so my companies could grow, and everybody can do it. Sorry, I'm choking. I want to be on City Council, not to tell you what to do. I want to be on City Council to inform and to make sure everybody has the right to make this community the community they want it to be, the citizens of this community want it to be. I really want to stand up and defend my city. I've done it before, and I'll keep doing it. This city is amazing. I love it. The people here are amazing. And we also need to keep this a beach community. I'm sorry, I'm choking. Thank you again. My name is Brennan Kenny, and I will get better at this.
Yes, thank you all for having us out. A lot of what you're missing right now is what we all get to look at. We're looking at the reason why we all moved to Huntington Beach, right out those windows. And that's that gorgeous ocean and what this community has to offer us. And I'd like to be on City Council to stick to the basics of a municipal government, you know, providing for public safety, providing good infrastructure, sustainable infrastructure that's going to be maintained and improved as this community ages, to give us the city services that we all have grown up here wanting and having, to have the senior center, to have the senior activities, to have the children's activities through Murdy Park and the adult activities, and all these things that we've kind of accustomed to. And the only way we're going to do that is to really tackle our finances and to- And the only way we're going to do that is to really tackle our finances and to really do what a municipal government's supposed to do. And along with that, I want this community to stay Huntington Beach, you know? We'll have development, we'll have good development, we'll have bad development, but we don't need to turn into South Bay. We don't need to turn into Santa Monica. So we need to have the public input, the business input, the community input on how do we want our community to be? I want to retire here. I grew up here. My kids, I want them to eventually afford to live here and, or, you know, bring the grandkids. This is where I want to, you know, live till I die. And I think I could be a good part of it. I've served you on the finance board, I've served you on the planning commission, I'm the current chair, I've served you on the design review board, I've served my country in the Marine Corps for five years, and I'm ready to serve all of you as the next city councilman. Thank you.
Being Johnny on the spot with those questions and answers, it's really hard. I haven't had that for probably 10, 15 years. So, so once again, to my closing statement here, as a 19-year resident homeowner, parent, self-employed business owner, I'm proud to call Huntington Beach my home. I am on a mission to represent the citizens and unite those that desire an accountable, positive, community-centered Huntington Beach City Council. I believe in hard work, creativity, civil discourse, accessibility, and balance of all ideas are what make a city council thrive for its residents. I believe we need to take a more solution-oriented, imaginative approach to how we handle issues in our city and inspire community participation. I am passionate about a safe downtown. I'm passionate about clean beaches, promoting small businesses, protecting the rights of property owners, as well as a less intrusive, burdensome government. I actively participate with various local charity events that help raise much-needed assistance for our veterans, council foundations, and other area organizations, and want to get more involved, I, excuse me, and want to get the public more involved. This beautiful city belongs to the community and is my pledge to give the voice back to the people. My name is Hector Valdez. Some of you know me as Heck. I'm lucky number seven on that ballot, so please remember me. And like Brennan said, I promise to get better at this.
Once again, I'm Joe Shaw. In my life, I've worn many hats. I've been a business owner, but my real heart of service has been in the nonprofit sector that I've worked in for many, many years and in the community organizations that I volunteer for. One of our greatest assets in our city are our community volunteers. And as we enter this past week of celebrating being a compassionate city, I think it's important to remember that the spirit of service, it's the spirit of service and the spirit of compassion that holds our city together. In the past four years, we've accomplished a lot. And working as, together as a community, we can accomplish more in the next four years. We've spent four solid years protecting seniors and mobile home parks, improving public safety, protecting our oceans and beaches, and paying off our unfunded liabilities. I'm Joe Shaw. I'm number one on the ballot. I'm your mayor pro temp and I humbly ask you for your vote.
And again, I'm Lynn Semeta and I love my city as well. And I want this city to stay the way that it is, to have the quality of life that we have now. We need to maintain that. So I would like to use my skills as someone who likes to collaborate and work for the common goals of people that may have diverse opinions. I'd like to use those skills on city council. I would like really to use a reasoned, balanced approach, analyze things as we go along, find the best solutions, and I think that I can do that. As I've said before, one of the big factors that I would like to work on in city council is making this more business-friendly, streamlining those permits, and I will do that. I think one of the ideas that I like is maybe having one person, when someone comes for an application for a property development or a business or whatever it is, let's have one person shepherd them through the whole process instead of having to go to each department with a delay at each time. So I like that idea. I also want to work for responsible property development, maintaining the character of Huntington Beach the way that it is. I think we need to really work on our infrastructure and, of course, pension liabilities, unfunded liabilities factor into that. We need to work on those, reduce those, work with the city employees. I really believe they have just as much of a vested interest in making sure that the city is financially liable or stable as well. So we need to work with them to deal with that problem. So I will listen to you on city council. That's our job. People, the people have a voice and we need to listen to you, seek your input, and act upon it. And that's what I would do. So again, Lynn Semeta for city council. I'm number two on the ballot. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mark Bixby again. You probably still know that. It's my campaign slogan on my campaign business cards is integrity, experience, vision. My promise to you is that in everything that I do on behalf of the city, I will do it to the fullest extent possible. I will always do that homework, I will always do that honesty reading, I will always meet with stakeholders. I do not plan to have all the answers for all the challenges we face, but my door is always open to any good idea. So come, let's talk about what the policy of the city should be. I don't have any higher ambitions for higher political office. I'm not headed to Santa Ana, I'm not headed to Sacramento. I'm in this just to see good policy be done for the place that I call home so that we can be the best city we can be. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Mike Posey. I'm number three on the ballot, proudly endorsed first by the Huntington Beach Chamber of Commerce PAC, Republican Party, Lincoln Club, Travis Allen, Jim Silva, Joe Cartio, and many, many others. Thank you for the opportunity for inviting us here. I know it was kind of hot, but I'm glad everybody turned out. My campaign slogan is leadership now more than ever. And why do I say that? I see a leadership vacuum coming. There needs to be somebody in charge or on the city council, maybe not in charge yet, somebody in the city council that's really a leader. And, you know, we talk about what is that? We also talk a lot about what is economic development? We've heard economic development bandied about like it's a slogan, a cliche, or catchphrase. In my professional life, that's what I do. I am engaged in economic development. I sell machinery to large companies, small companies, all up and down the West Coast. And I built three or four successful teams doing that over my 25, 30-year career. Right now, I'm engaged in economic development. I've got three Chinese companies moving back to the States to start manufacturing. Hard to believe, I know it is. Unfortunately, none of the three can come to Huntington Beach because they need 200,000 square feet rail spurs, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. What this city council needs for the business community is somebody to sell the city, the benefits and features of the city, to the business community. That's what I do. That's what I do in my professional life. I've risen to the top of my field because I know what I'm doing, I know how to negotiate. I've negotiated with labor. My first management job at the age of 27, I negotiated successfully with Teamsters at the age of 27. I can do that for this city. I want your vote. I want to earn your vote. I'll work very hard for your vote. My address, my home address is on my business card. I live on Main Street. Most of you know probably where I live already. And I look forward to serving you should you choose to elect me. Thank you very much.
I'm an open book and easily accessible. My name's Alexander Polsky. Send an email, I will respond. I'll set up personal meetings, I'll come to your home. That won't change after I'm elected. Safety, quality, money, and respect are what I see for our city. Safety, making sure our public safety professionals are properly compensated and adequately staffed. Regulations. Regulations should be straightforward. There shouldn't be too many of them. We don't need a confusing jumble of what time can you get a glass of wine on Main. You know what we need? Cops on the street. Cops on the street will take care of the drinking issue. We don't have enough cops to put them on the street, not with a lot of overtime. Just as an aside, safety also links to one other issue and that's pot dispensaries, which I don't think belong in our city. Quality, senior center mandated by the citizens without a budget assessed. We're planning for it. It's funded, city money. Didn't have to be funded with city money and maybe it still doesn't. Seniors, children, infrastructure, that's all quality of life. That's what I want to bring to you in a balanced way, making sure we balance those needs with the reduction in the pension and unfunded liabilities. You can't take too much and put it unfunded unless you have enough to pay for the day's needs. Smart decision-making and respect. City council meetings are pretty interesting sometimes. I see sitting city council members often incredibly disrespectful to people who they don't believe in or don't believe, share the same opinions. That's wrong. There needs to be an approach to people visiting city council, a time for them to make their speech, and the respect for them to be listened to and they're not getting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, ladies and gentlemen, what you see here is you've got some people who care about this city. One of the greatest, most beautiful cities in the entire world happens to be right here. And you're not going to find any better citizens. And they care so much. And we thank you for your interest. We thank you for your desire to serve this great city and we wish you the best of luck in the campaign coming up in November.
I want to thank the legislative action team at the Chamber of Commerce. They are the ones who created these questions, so appreciate the efforts that they put forth on that. And I'd like to also thank the chamber staff. They did a lot of work to make this happen as well. So, thank you. So in closing, I'm going to do a pitch for voting. Don't forget to register to vote. I believe the last day to register is October 20th, so please register to vote if you haven't. Take the time to learn more about each candidate so you're able to select the candidates that best represent your vision for Huntington Beach. Your vote counts in a local election. Two years ago, a council seat was decided by 106 votes, so by just the people in this room. So it's important. Please vote. Thank you very much.